February 8th, 2017, Willett City Council Meeting to Order. And I'd like, how about Nick Happel come forward and decide the pledge for us?
Can we join you?
Yeah. Thank you.
Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll call.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
President.
Strong.
Here.
Orinsky.
Here.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Here. All right, public communication, the council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard, to expedite matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council commission boards and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. Any public communication? Step forward and tell us your name, up to the podium, if you don't mind writing your name down for our clerk.
My name's Dan.
Yeah. Sign in.
Okay, my name's John McKee. I live in unincorporated Willets. Over the last year or two, and I even tuned into the council meeting last month, there's been this talk about luring traffic off our new freeway into town. But we waited 30 years for this opportunity and spent $200 million to reduce traffic in town. And Willets has been spoiled for the last 15 years having the only signal lights between San Francisco and Eureka, so there shouldn't be any complaint now that the playing field has been leveled. And we may lose a few businesses here and there, but it's for the greater good. And you might be chasing a few tax dollars that you may or may never get back, but you'll never get the time stolen out of your life back sitting in traffic. And then another thing, if one of us, which I mean by the five of you or I, were ever involved in a traffic collision with a vehicle that should have been out there on the freeway, then what have we gained? So as Bill O'Reilly would conclude, can you say?
Thank you, John. All right. Any other person in the public that wants to come up and speak? Whoever holds your peace, I guess, at least till the next meeting. And item three, public matters. We have a proclamation, presentation, proclamation recognizing National Boy Scout Day, February 8th. I'm going to read it first and then I'm going to have Nick come back up. So proclamation of the Willett City Council recognizing National Boy Scouts Day, February 8th, 2017. Whereas founded in 1910, the Boy Scouts of America is the largest scouting organization in the United States of America and one of the largest youth organizations in the United States with more than 2.4 million youth participants and nearly 1 million adult volunteers. And whereas the goal of the Boy Scouts is to train youth in responsible citizenship, character development, and self-reliance through participation in a wide range of outdoor activities, education programs, and at older age levels, career-oriented programs, and a partnership with community organizations. And whereas the mission statement of the Boy Scouts is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the scout oath and law. And whereas scouting and the Boy Scouts are well-known throughout the American culture and have had a profound impact on the United States with many presidents and other dignitaries having been Boy Scouts. And whereas our local troops, 42, 88, 212, and Cub Scout Pack 42 admirably engage in community involvement such as putting out American flags on patriotic holidays and events, pick up and dispose of Christmas trees, the cleaning up of the rodeo grounds and parks during Frontier Days, to just name a few. As well, many Eagle Scouts do community projects ranging from park benches to trail cleanup and repair. Now therefore, I, Gennando Gonzalez, Mayor of the City of Willetts, do hereby recognize February 8th as National Boy Scouts Day and applaud our local Boy Scouts for all they do for the betterment of our community. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Willetts to be affixed on this 8th day of February 2017. Well, let's get the Willetts news here. Weekly, you guys want to take a picture?
Yeah.
Here, why don't you hold that?
One, two, three. Second one.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And item 3B, discussion and possible action to register the rates to be charged by Hey Taxi for providing taxi cab transportation services in Willetts. Dusty, take it away.
Anthony, something, may I say something first? I want to thank you guys for all the good work that you do, and I appreciate everything that the Boy Scouts do, both of the scout groups, your group and 42 also. Thank you very, very much for that. Yes?
I'd also like to, on behalf of all three troops in Willetts, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the city council for your support of our organization. Without support from the local community leaders and business leaders and whatnot around here, we wouldn't be able to do nearly the good for the youth as we do. And so, on behalf of all three troops and the Cub Scout Pack, I'd like to thank you guys for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Dusty.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez, and good evening, council members. This is a request by Mr. Michael Gutierrez, who operates a taxi cab service down in Ukiah. He'd like to bring his services to Willetts. Per resolution that a previous city council passed in 1996, the council is required to register or essentially approve the proposed rates that Mr. Gutierrez has identified in his letter to the city. It's my understanding that these are the same rates that are charged to the City of Ukiah folks. Let's see what he mentioned on that. He'll still be required to obtain a business license. There's some drug screening requirements that go along with that. But the first step is to go ahead and see if you guys are okay with the rates he's proposing. Yesterday, he also emailed me a request to see if the council was interested in establishing an exclusive contract with Mr. Gutierrez that would prohibit other taxi services from coming in to town for a specified time. I'm not aware of any other taxi cab services that are interested in operating in Willetts. But because of the late nature of the request and the fact that it wasn't included in your, in the agenda packet and the notice, we wouldn't be able to weigh in on that officially today. There's also potentially a discrepancy between the name of the business. Staff noticed it as Hey Taxi, and I think Mr. Gutierrez could maybe explain how he's a subsidiary of that or something like that. But at least if we could have a discussion on the rates today, it might be that the staff needs to come back with revised resolution at the next meeting. But anyways, Mr. Gutierrez is here to answer any questions you might have.
Go ahead, Mr. Gutierrez. Just so you know, the microphone is more for TV land than for the folks in here.
Yeah, I heard that earlier today.
Okay.
Which is fine. So as, thank you, by the way, for allowing me to present. Dustin mentioned the name that was listed on the, on your agenda is, and the information listed on your agenda is to the ownership of Hey Taxi, it's not me. I'm not an owner of Hey Taxi. I operate as Redwood Taxi Service, DBA Hey Taxi. Hey Taxi is a whole different ownership, and I am not aligning with them for the purposes of bringing taxi services to the Willetts area when that gets, if that gets approved. So that would be something that's a formality that probably needs to be addressed at the next meeting.
Would your taxi say Hey Taxi, or would they say Redwood Taxi?
No, they would say Redwood Taxi Service.
Okay.
We're basically bringing a completely new service to the area, is what our hope is. And we've been aligned with Hey Taxi for about four and a half years now. And the way that operates is that Hey Taxi is an umbrella that has a name, that is a brand that people are familiar with, and a phone number that people are aware of. So we pay them a royalty for the usage of the name and that number, and that's pretty much the, there's really no other operational elements that they are a part of with the operation of taxi service otherwise, which would also include any kinds of advertising or promotional stuff that happens. We all do that ourselves as owners and operators. So that kind of answers that issue there. And then on the idea of exclusivity, you know, it's something that's a little harder to express, but it's something that concerns me as far as the barrier to entry for this kind of a business. It's not a Fortune 500 company in the making. It's a relatively small business. And the scope of things is pretty easy to run into people that would probably be interested in seeing more of that come into the area. Now, should the volume be sufficient to support more business, it totally makes sense to have competition, but we're trying to build it, and we want to see that we have some time to do that. And I keep saying "we," by the way, my wife, Amanda, is sitting over there, also part of this. So that's kind of the idea with exclusivity as far as that's concerned. We don't, we don't really assume that that's going to work out perfectly for us, but we figured we'd at least ask and see if that's something we can look at again later on. And then I wanted to give a little bit of information about myself and what I've done with Hey Taxi in Ukiah. I've been a business owner in Ukiah for about 20 years now, operating a graphic design business. I went into the taxi business a few years back, and it's been fantastic, and I really enjoyed it. We have a very high level of quality of service in the business that I'm operating with. We've had no major issues since I've been operating with them. That means we've had no collisions or any arrests or anything like that of our drivers, thank goodness. There have been, currently I'm operating as a manager of that team and handling all the scheduling and any team member issues, client issues, or anything on the service recovery side. And I've been doing that for quite some time. I've got the blessing from the person that I operate under to come up here and try to start something up here, and we're going to try to work together to make both sides work, is there's a lot of shared business that goes on between Ukiah and Willetts, including, you know, we work with UVM-C quite a bit in providing transport services for their laboratory specimens that they need to get to come to your lab up here at Howard Memorial, which has got a really great laboratory in it, apparently, and we've been working with them diligently to provide that service, among other things, where Willetts has come into focus. And it's one of the reasons why I'm looking at this service up here as being a part of the new chain of things that we do with those taxi services down south. The intention is to provide a 24-hour service. We're looking at seven days a week. Is this okay right now?
No, no.
Thank you. We expect everything to be as metered rate, just like it is in Ukiah. We have very specific meters that we would use. Those meters would be basically verified by the Mendocino County Department of Weights and Measures, and which they would be providing locks and seals on those devices so they couldn't be tampered with. So we wouldn't actually, we'd express, you'd bring them the order, at least the resolution would have states as far as what our rates are, and then they would apply those verifications to what we've programmed into those devices, and if they match up, they'd seal them and sign them.
Can I quit regarding those? Do they provide receipts, or do they take credit cards?
Those are actually not a processing station for payment. All our payments happen either in cash or credit card processing, and they usually have a device for that in the vehicle. So those only operate as a means for being able to generate an amount of money that is being incurred as a result of this transporting this individual for whatever fare we were hired for. That would only happen in town specifically. We do provide long-run services where we would do different kinds of rates and quote rate services out for those. And then we would option for ethylate down services, which is a little bit more unique in this area. We don't get as many flag downs in Ukiah, so I'm wondering how that will look up here with a lot of the nightlife and after-hours business that might, you know, affect how that goes. As far as the drivers are concerned, all our drivers are dispatchers. They also communicate via their own devices. We use some push-to-talk apps that work like walkie-talkies, so we have really good connect, but they're all hands-free. It's a requirement, you know, that we don't have anybody operating on their phones while driving. And some of the other things that are, I think, interesting is we have a really fantastic insurance provider. Commercial liability policy carries a million-dollar coverage, which also includes our passengers, which is unique, in the sense that if any of our drivers are in a situation where they're at fault and passengers are injured or have suffered any injuries, they're going to be covered. And I'd introduce the option for City Willetts to be covered under that policy as a certificate holder, an additional insured if they wanted to do that in the event that somebody decided they want to see you guys in the accident that might occur with those being, I think we have that in Ukiah also, so that's kind of why we're looking at that. I discuss about how our drivers are recruited. We don't have any employees. Everybody's an independent contractor, and then that's a pretty common vein with this kind of a business. Independent contractors are reviewed by me, or reviewed by me, and I have very specific requirements that I follow based upon how we do things in Ukiah. It's a little bit different. In Ukiah, there's some more policies that you don't have, or at least I've asked for, and there are policies that they don't ask for that you have, with specifics to the drug testing. We don't know why it's any different, but at least that's one of the differences. Drivers will be required to provide me with a driving record printout from their DMV. That's also for insurance purposes. I want to be able to make sure my insurance wants to cover these people. I'll need copies of their driver's license, a criminal history background. A check would be something I'd like to get involved with to basically rate drivers on what experiences they have with law enforcement, because we like to really enjoy a good relationship with law enforcement. Of course, they would need to pass the drug screen, have a proof of the Willetts business license, and they would also sign a contract with me for services. They would not be allowed to drive for me unless all those things were covered, pretty much. So I run a relatively stringent code with my drivers in Ukiah, and I do the same up here because I like to have good people behind the wheel that way we don't have any strange things happening, or, you know, we run less risk with that. And that, you know, also talking about with the relationship with law enforcement, one of the things that we do in Ukiah is we have our vehicles outfitted with dash cam cameras that which are running 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They collect video imagery on those taxis that are both front and interior-facing. We would want to have those in our taxis, and we would love it if we had a relationship with all our enforcement people where they have complete access to those at any time that they requested. That helps us also in the cell when we have people coming into the vehicles, and you never know if somebody's got bad intent. We can talk about that a little bit, and it certainly helps out with diverting people from having something bad happen, perhaps. It's, you know, it's, we're pointing with people in dark places from time to time, so that can be an issue. We will maintain also a list of all our active drivers available, and if not, attached to anything that goes with Willetts PD or with the city, so that way they would know who to talk to if ever there was something that came up. That's pretty much it, Al, I would say about that now, and I'd be very happy to entertain any questions.
Because at this point, I'll put it up management.
Joe, I just, oh, question. How many contracted drivers are you expecting to have in the Willetts area?
My hope would be two minimum at the start, and eventually three to four.
And each of them would have their own business license and?
That's correct. Each one would have, acquire a business license and also do their own drug screen, pay for all of their own stuff on that. We wouldn't carry any of that cost.
Rock?
Okay. I'm going to ask some questions that are a little bit related to what you talked about, but, you know, our responsibility is for the health, welfare, and safety of the public, so I need to go in certain places here. You talked about the, and it's in here, the resolution talks about the drug testing that's done prior to hiring the drivers or contracting with them, correct?
Yes.
Now, does it ever, what happens after they're, they become part of your, I wouldn't use the word hire, but that's not correct. So what, is it contracted with you?
Yes.
Okay, what happens afterwards? I mean, it's easy to take a drug test on day one and then go crazy on day five, you know. So what assurance is there that, you know, it's a permanent condition, that they're sober?
Sure. No, that's a great question. See, the hard part in any business, of course, is knowing exactly what you're getting when you hire somebody or bring somebody in to operate with you. Generally, in the past, what we've done, when we felt that we had a driver that may be having some issues, is we requested them to go and get another drug screen. And if that comes up, we wouldn't, I wouldn't hesitate to do that. We've had that incident occur in Ukiah, and that driver was released and wasn't allowed to drive vehicles at that point because they weren't willing to go and provide that.
Okay, so what happened, what would bring that to your attention?
Well, it started with this individual, specifically with customer complaints. We had received a couple complaints that they felt that he was smoking while in the vehicle, controlled substance, and one of those complaints was a person who was not in the vehicle but was an airline pilot who was driving by him while he was parked at a local motel and saw a waft of smoke coming out in the odor. Just coming from that alone, we were able to.
Okay, so it would be customer complaint then, or complaint-driven?
Absolutely. They're their first line of contact, unfortunately, in some cases, but, you know, we try to be up on it if we can.
Okay, so of course, when you talk about the substance testing, you're not talking with just alcohol. I assume it's drug testing as well?
Right, well, the resolution has very specific requirement that is following the federal regulations, which requires a panel that also includes five drugs, a five-panel drug screen, and alcohol.
Okay.
So at the time of testing, they would then, you know, have to pass all those elements.
Okay, and there's one that's kind of related, and this is, you know, this is weird, so forgive me, you know, I have to ask these questions here. What you have is a situation where you have a driver in a car with a stranger or a person, and the person could be a vulnerable person. Bad things happen when people are alone in cars with other people. So I guess what I'm referring to is not just, you know, drug or alcohol issues, I'm talking about, you know, use your imagination. What can someone do under those circumstances? And unfortunately, it does happen.
Sure.
So what, what do you have in place to make sure that, what should I say, they are of high moral character, or, you know?
Sure. You know, my first line of contact with them is to inform them that they would not be hired if these issues were, had come up where they didn't pass a drug screen, as an example. I'd look for them to provide me with a criminal history for the last 10 years. They can go and get that information themselves and provide it to me if that comes at a cost. I try to assume that a person that's willing to pay that cost and assumes they have nothing to report probably comes initially at least with a good background, and there is an opportunity to, you know, look at scenarios with that individual and see how they'll respond. Primarily, we work with people from the start, trying to get to see how they react to scenarios in the cab while driving with another driver. So training would be a part of this process. I'm assuming that anything that would be relevant to that would be from mishandling a client by having bad words with them is all the way up to something that could even be considered violence, always runs a risk. We do what we can in this business, especially like we've done in Ukiah, to find ways to not bring in people like that the best that we can. And we assume that if you have a good background, that maybe that might be something that would continue to progress with people as they continue on in their life. I only can assume. So I would try to mitigate that by simply having a good process in place to see that these people are either really equipped to come with it and say, "Oh yeah, we're great. We won't, we'll pass our drug screen," and then go and pass it. "Oh, no problem, I'll get you my background, it's great." "Oh, I have a great driving record, here's the info." And that's usually my starting point. Otherwise, it comes with customers, and a lot of times, our customers are very quick to call and inform us of any issues they've had with drivers. And they do come up. They do come up.
So I guess when you get a, when they bring you their, their police, what, their police record? Well, obviously, if they've never been arrested, they don't have a record. So, and?
So they're usually live-scanned, and he would get either, again, there's certain levels of live scan, and he would get some red flags. So if they come back as a sex registered or something, he's going to be made aware of that and probably say, "I'm not hiring you."
Would you explain live scan? I'm not, I think I understand it, but I'm not.
It's the electronic fingerprinting now. You get fingerprinted, it gets submitted to Department of Justice, and it comes back.
So any, 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 any run-in that anyone has ever had with law enforcement anywhere in the country would be?
Depends on the level of live scan. So if you go to work at a care home, they're searching for certain things, so.
Are you comfortable that these are pretty good?
I mean, as comfortable as you can be with the level of checking that you can do out there. I think that he's in the same boat with, as far as ongoing drug or alcohol use that any of the manufacturing plants would be if they had an issue or complaint. The Ninth Circuit has pretty much upheld that employers can do those sort of checks.
Okay. And your? And your history is, if I don't want to contract with somebody, I certainly won't.
Yeah, and your history is pretty decent in this regard?
Absolutely decent.
Okay.
Pristine, to be sure.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else on the council? Go ahead.
I was curious, and you may not know this, what the standards are for the, for example, MTA, they have dialer ride. Do you have similar standards? Are you familiar with what their standards for their drivers are?
I'm not entirely familiar with everything that they do. I understand it a little bit, and I have, you know, contacted the service before. And what I do want to know about it is that they are a door-to-door service, that they will service more than one client at a time. That's unique. We don't do that unless the clients agree to that. That's maybe a spot where we might have something like that occur. They also have different rates than we do. I'm not aware of the rates.
I was just curious about maybe the standards for the drivers more than where they service. One of the questions I had as well was that, do you have a better policy and safety handbook in place, like when you hire somebody new and you're training them? Do you already have one?
No, we have never used that kind of a thing with our drivers as far as training them. You know, we enforce certain things that are pretty commonplace, like situational awareness, handling of customers, service recovery issues when you have some complaints. Ultimately, we've been able to figure out a lot of our drivers pretty quickly within a few days of training them, because it can be kind of a little nerve-wracking sometimes dealing with people, you know, it comes through very quickly whether a person's equipped to handle public, you know, the public. So it's something we look for pretty fast. I'm very good at it, and I've hired magnificent staff that I work with over in Ukiah. So where that comes into play for me is I feel really confident in my ability to be able to do that. And I think they all attest to that, if you were to speak to any of them. We've done very well at that part. As far as handbooks and information for our drivers, we haven't really offered that because it's pretty basic, what we do. You know, it's get them from here to there, answer the calls, be timely, be safe.
I was thinking more, when there's emergency-type situations, how you would want your driver to handle that kind of thing?
It's funny, because of my drivers, I have two military, two ex-military, one who's a current fire and rescue guy, and a couple of the people that were just, have been in the business a long time, and in specific have been doing stuff with, like, after-hours business, so like working at convenience stores. So they've had a long run already having to handle people in diverse situations. All of them are fantastic out in the field so far. You know, it's hard to say that any of those things are going to completely matter here because I'm only assuming, but I feel like the record is good enough on my part, and I feel like what we've done in Ukiah has done a good job, so I'm confident that'll do it. That'll do.
And then I would say that I didn't see in here, he's expressed a willingness to have, have all the drivers fingerprinted, but I'd like to see that it's a mandate that all drivers get fingerprinted through the DHA and the FBI. And then who would be managing those, with those records? Are you going to manage when the reports come in, or are you going to use an outside screening?
I'm smiling because this has been a question that's come up before, and in fact, when the mayor was chief, we had to have conversations about this before also. And I recently spoke with Sean Kizer, who heads the Taxi Commission, that is through the Ukiah Police Department in Ukiah. They're the ones that govern whether or not we have taxi drivers going to be licensed, or not licensed, but certified to operate in the Ukiah area. So we go through them, and they've set up this laborious task of doing this live scan and providing information back to the drivers, and also providing them with a badge and a certificate. a certificate. And they've done a great job. Every time I talk to Sean, he's like, "Oh, this job is horrible, I really hate doing this, but we have to do it because the city wanted this." I look forward to that opportunity. I think it's a great way to go. To have our drivers have to submit for those types of things makes sense to me, anyway. It's why I was implementing it as a part of my policy upfront, because I wanted them to be able to do that. I wanted them to be able to go to the DOJ, have the FBI background fingerprint, and come back with a result that says, "A-okay," or, "We have worries, this guy has some theft issues in the last seven years." It's happened, and they don't come in, and we don't call them back.
And then, the last question I have is about your coverage area. Are you in town, are you Brick Trails, are you Laytonville?
How far?
We'd like to think that we would operate pretty much anywhere in Mendocino County, and we do. So A-Taxi, Out of Ukiah, we do cover Willets, Lakeview, Leggett, we cover Fort Bragg, we cover the coastline, we cover some of the south areas, too. We won't tread into other counties, so if somebody calls from Lake County, asks us for a ride from here in Lake County to there in Lake County, we won't do that. But if somebody wants a ride from Ukiah to Lake County, we'll give them a ride.
And you typically have more than one driver, so if a driver's taking somebody to Laytonville, there's another driver available?
Yes, in a perfect one scenario, we have enough drivers to accommodate.
Just kind of get a sense of what you're envisioning.
For me, at least, for what we're doing in Willets, what we want to do in Willets, I envision that initially it'll be a one-car business for a little while. I will be trying to recruit people as I can, naturally, with the drug screen, it kind of eviscerates 80% of my screening, but I imagine I'll find some good people, I'm holding out good hope for that. Currently, I would be the primary driver, but that would be also part of the discovery, to find out what's going to happen here, to see how people are going to respond to the service, to see what the business levels are going to be like. My drugs would be that, to see that this would be in full operation with two taxis within the next six months.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, do you have any?
Yeah.
I want to follow up with a couple of questions.
Sure.
One is, your rates are going to mirror Ukiah's rates, is that what you've stated?
Yes, I like to think so.
Okay, and your drivers are going to be independent contractors as opposed to employees, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And the, and again, it's going to be up to you, but Uber, I hear, is in Ukiah. How is that, have you factored that in?
For Willets, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. As far as using Ukiah, is there anything?
No, go ahead.
As far as using Ukiah as the standard, Uber's made a pretty small dent.
Okay, so-
When we do. So they're an e-app, and the way the e-app works is you can't do flag downs, as an example. Door-to-door services in the mix, but it has to be between two people that share the same app on their phone.
And I know that A-Taxi in Ukiah does A-Taxi Medical, are you looking at any of that in your business model?
You know, A-Taxi Medical does service the military already. They've got some regional center clients they have up here, they have some seniors that they do work with, to spring down to some of the clinics in Ukiah. Yeah, I'd be looking at acquiring some of those types of clients, and eventually looking at maybe having a taxi vehicle that will be able to handle with wheelchair access.
Yes, I know that MTA, and again, I think, to answer your question, their MTA is governed by, I think, the paratransit rules, as far as their licensing and so fingerprinting and all that. You guys are governed under different rules, and so that's the difference there, but they don't work after certain hours, so there's a need for folks up in Brick Trails or in the valley to come into town, whether it's to shop or to get home after a night on the town. So I welcome your business coming to town.
Thank you. Do my fancy. As part of that evaluation for business up here, one of the first things I would do is check in with some of the municipal organizations. And I did have a chance to sit with Med, Serge, over at Howard Memorial, and they feel there's a real need for a taxi service. They've got a lot of clients that can't make appointments because they happen outside of the hours of transit that they often use, like for senior center transit, or bus service. So they were very interested to see that we were coming in. And the reason why this conversation happens is because we're doing so much work with their lab, and I'm having an opportunity to interface with their staff. So there's stuff to look at for that. Regional center clients that live up here that go to Ukiah, there'd be stuff to look at for that also.
Okay.
And I'd love to look at adjusting my rates to make it so that I can make them more palatable for people in other situations, like our seniors or even veterans.
Okay, this resolution is focused pretty much primarily on the drivers, on the rates, and on the sobriety test, but, and I guess this is directed toward Dusty. I don't see where there's anything in here that we're looking at that addresses the normal business practices. I mean, for example, if we want to terminate the contract, or if they want to terminate the contract, or is there a contract? What is our relationship? How does it end? How does it continue? Is that supposed to be included in what we're going to be voting on?
From looking at the resolution, it appears the authority with the council is to approve the rates alone. If a situation arose, and I don't think it would from my discussions with Ukiah and with Mr. Gutierrez, but if a situation came up where a taxi service wasn't operating correctly, and we were not interested in them continuing service in the city, I'm not quite sure what our avenue is to terminate that service. We have a business license that each, since there's independent contractors, each contractor is going to be submitting a business license, and before approving it, we're going to have to have the drug screening results and possibly the live scan situation, if we include that in your motion today. And I'm sorry, I'm looking at him.
I'd like to know, if Mr. Gutierrez can tell us his arrangement with the City of Ukiah. Do you have a contract with the City of Ukiah that authorizes you to perform your taxi service here, or is it simply a business license?
It's a business license solely. They've never established a sort of contract with us or the main business. We operate all individually as independent contractors.
Jim, and I think, in my review, they actually have a different setup. They actually have a, not a taxi commission, but a, something like that. They've got a lot more ordinances dealing with taxis. I think ours is relegated to this, making him adhere to federal standards and the government code, and also, I think, we also have an ordinance regarding setting up a taxi cab stand that's something out of the 30s, so.
Well, it's something I'd like to look into. If the city does have the authority to condition issuance of a business license on an agreement that there are live scans and DOJ background checks and so forth, then we should look into that. I, we weren't looking at that for tonight, but this is just about rate setting for tonight, but I'd like to see what other cities are doing with their taxi operators.
Well, you know, I mean, that was my whole point. I mean, this is, on the face of it, it's just simply looking at the rate schedule, which is fine.
Right.
But, you know, and no reflection on you, I understand, this is, you know, this is a situation that conceivably, probably not probably, but could turn sour. And in every contract, in every business relationship the city has with anybody, there's always some sort of an escape clause in there, some sort of condition that the city can enact to end the relationship, or modify it, or whatever. And I don't see any of that here. And now, I don't know if that's included in a normal business license. I'm not suggesting it will be, but, you know, we don't do business. I don't think it's smart to do business saying, "Well, it's probably going to be okay." I don't think it's ever a good idea.
I wonder if there's an opportunity to limit the approval of the rates? Rates approved for extiration, which would require us to, Mr. Gutierrez, to come before the council at a future date to have those rates reviewed again and potentially-
Well, I'm not thinking just about the rates, I'm thinking about the whole relationship.
I wonder if that would be a way to sort of essentially give temporary approval of the service by approving the rates for an X amount of period?
I'm concerned that if we limit it to that, and we start to talk about some other aspect of the arrangement, that we won't be able to go any further, because it won't say that we're talking about. But I believe, I'm trying to recall, we've recently done some contracts or agreements with other parties, and there's always in those agreements that, you know, the city has the right to review it, maybe it's renewable every year or every couple of years, and we review the performance and decide if you want to continue, you know, there's always that kind of a thing going on, and-
That's a tool that we'll commonly use with discretionary permits or abuse permits.
So Jim, if we were to approve his rates to allow him to get started, my recollection with A-Taxi, when they came in, is that the ridership dropped, the market dictated that at that time it wasn't profitable, and they walked away from Willets. And obviously, the market forces now, to me, are probably even harder now, because Uber at your tail. I mean, I know it's a different mechanism, that if we allowed him to continue for now, but it gave approval of his rates for a year, are we bound by doing that? And should we hold this over, or do we have an opportunity to allow him to start up and then? Because I think, like I said, Ukiah has the effect of a taxi commission, and they actually have a more of a hierarchical process than we have.
Right, the only thing that the City of Willets has done historically was enact this resolution back in 1996, and that's limited to requiring that the drivers pass certain drug tests and establishing the rates. And so if the city is interested, if the council's interested in seeing what other conditions can be imposed before entering into the relationship, then maybe we'll put this over for the next meeting, so that I can answer that question for you.
I think that would be an excellent idea. I'm just getting an uncomfortable feeling that we're only doing a halfway job here.
What's, I guess I'm going to put it out to everybody?
Well, yeah, I was thinking that it would be nice to have, basically, this amounts to a sort of a contract between the city and you to operate this business, and I feel pretty confident that you know how to do that business, and it's going to be a credit to have that service here in the city. But I do think, given that it's sort of a contract, that it would be good to have something in that resolution or in that contract that says that if concerns are brought forward, that their outfit is not fulfilling its end of the thing, that there's some, you know, basis for review or revocation if there's a problem. So it's just, it isn't spelled out right now, so.
That's true.
And I was kind of torn with the idea of, you know, could we provisionally accept this with the provision that you would come back with, you know, some added paragraph later? But if it's, if two weeks isn't going to make a huge difference to you, then maybe it's better and cleaner to do it all at once.
That makes sense to me.
I just want to say, you know, we are talking about different things. What's before you and I are just the approval of the rates, which doesn't give approval for the business to start, that goes through the business license process. And so I'm wondering if it's that process that you want to take a look at, or are you really interested in more like a franchise agreement with this operator?
Well, he's proposing, you want a franchise agreement with us, is that correct? You want to be-
You want some exclusive.
You want an exclusive agreement.
I was hoping for it, sure.
So if he wants to come, if we were to approve his rates today, that's not the same as that agreement, and if that came back, we would have an opportunity at that point to-
Right, but rather than doing it piecemeal, part of it now, the rates now, and then-
So you're saying just bring it all back?
And then the exclusivity issue, the franchise issue, and other conditions later, maybe we do it all.
That might be better. Would you be better prepared in two weeks, come back with a proposal with the, why you should be our exclusive taxi service?
I could do that, yeah.
What your-
Well, you know, I'm not, I think it may be premature to get into a discussion of exclusivity. I mean, I think we need to get, have an engagement period, be married for a little while together before we decided to bond ourselves for life.
Well, if nothing else, it'd be a conditional use permit, that it could be pre-ordered of a year or something, in which case we would review it. Is that something similar to that?
Well, sure, and I understand-
Something of a time element.
... concern, too, about why give an exclusive contract to someone who you have not engaged in business with before, and do you really want to do that? Or would you like to have a request for proposals for other taxi cab operators as well, or?
I think we had chatted that we would probably, if that were on the agenda, we would probably want to notice it. Would it be a public hearing?
Yeah, it could be.
So that if there were other folks out there that wanted to bring a proposal forward, I guess I, you go down to the Bay Area, and between all the taxi companies that are there, obviously, they have a system down in San Francisco for their taxi cabs that exists, but between Uber and Lyft now on their, the consumer has a lot. I mean, I see our response, we obviously scream brought up for safety, but also to the ratepayers out there, to make sure that, you know, we aren't paying the most in all of Mendocino County, but that it'd be even for folks out there.
Sure.
And obviously, the market would dictate, if you're competitive, people may, and offer a service that isn't out there, then you'll hopefully make a go of it, so.
I think staff should also have an opportunity to talk to the City of Ukiah, maybe other surrounding cities, and find out what rates are being paid, and, you know, do our due diligence of finding it out.
Dusty, do you see this as, if we push this to the next meeting, it's rushing, should we push it two meetings out? I mean, I know that puts an issue, but it gives him a little more opportunity. I know Ukiah has A-Taxi and Riley Cab, I think, down there, I don't know what else they have down there.
It's not quite clear what direction you're leading staff in. I understood we're looking to create a tool where it's clear that the city has the ability to allow for a taxi service to come in on a, at least a trial basis, to where by approving the rates and issuing the business license, it doesn't run forever. So we're looking for a tool to have control over a situation where things are going accordingly. And, you know, Jim and I will have to talk, your staff will have to talk about it, maybe it's a amending our resolution and adding that tool into there, and we probably could prepare that and bring that back to council at the next meeting. We certainly can check in with other jurisdictions that they operate and confirm some of the information that I'm sure Mr. Gutierrez is correct on. As far as the exclusivity, am I saying that right? And putting notice out to the county and wherever, you know, that's probably something that would go beyond-
Okay, I get it.
... ability to bring back at the next meeting.
Carrie, I think that we ought to postpone this for two meetings, so that you'll have plenty, Dusty, not questioning, and just to try to come up with staff, have a, have a consensus in a couple of meetings.
I would just like to say that a question you should ask yourself, and Jim should discuss as well, is, this is a business. Is it that much different than a clothing store that wants to open on Main Street? I mean, is it a different set of circumstances? Do we treat it differently? Because it is slightly different, it's not a storefront. It's, you know, it's got some other issues that, you know, a restaurant doesn't have, for example. So should we treat it differently? And should we just regard it as a business, and, you know, come on in and do what you do, and no contract or whatever, you know, business license kind of thing? Or because it's slightly different than a brick-and-mortar business, that maybe we have to think of it differently? I don't know the answer to that, but that might be something you're going to want to explore.
If I could say, I'm thinking from a business standpoint, as a business owner in the community, and I want to make sure that our community's health and safety is protected, but at the same time, we have to be mindful of not putting so many obstacles in front of a business owner that we discourage not only this potential business owner, but other businesses who are sitting here watching or hearing about this. We need to let them know that we are a business-friendly council, and that, you know, we're not going to make you jump through so many hoops that you don't want to come.
Well, and I think that's a good example of where the resolution process maybe where the simpler plan, I just think it might be real hard to set up a taxi commission before that.
Right. No, but I want to be able to address the concerns I've heard tonight about, what if we are not happy? What if we wish we had not authorized this business? What can we do to revoke it if necessary? And I don't have the answers for that.
But is that really, would it be a problem if we passed the rates tonight? Couldn't we still address that issue at the next meeting, or the one after that?
Well, you could. You could do it piecemeal, or you could do it all at once. I was suggesting that-
Piecemeal, to me, sometimes, is progress and it shows intent, so.
Jim, what about the disparity with the A-Taxi versus- What about disparity with the Hay Taxi versus Redwood?
Well, that's one thing that I had concern about is in the letter that Mr. Gutierrez wrote to Adrian a couple of months ago, he spoke of Hay Taxi, Inc. as being a previous provider to the City of Willets for about a three-year period, and that Hay Taxi, Inc. has been providing service in the City of Ukiah since 2001 presently, and that he, his business is Redwood Taxi Service, DVA, Hay Taxi. But he was very careful to clarify that he is not Hay Taxi, Inc., he's Hay Taxi or DVA Hay Taxi. And I was, I had some confusion about just exactly what Redwood Taxi Service is. Is it a legal entity? Is it a corporation or an LLC? Or is that just the name of, of the business that you run? And do you have, if Mr. Gutierrez is the owner of this service, have you filed a fictitious business name statement that authorizes you to do business under another name? And, and what is that name? And how does that jive with Hay Taxi, Inc.?
Well, since I've, since I've been working under Hay Taxi Incorporated, I've always used the name of Redwood Taxi Service, so I'm already listed there with them. Although they don't require us to do a fictitious business name. I hadn't had to do that until today, when I went down to the county office and did that. So I'm actually in that process and the queue for all that to take place, while also turning in my application.
So what is, what is the fictitious business name that you have filed an application for?
That would be for Redwood Taxi Service.
So it's, so you are the owner as a sole proprietor. It's Mr. Gutierrez doing business as Redwood Taxi Service for a fictitious business name statement you filed today.
I'm assuming that you're saying the same thing I am. I'm not really sure exactly what the difference is.
I'm just wondering, who, who is Redwood Taxi Service? Is it, is it a legal entity? Or are you, are you the owner of the business?
It is listed as a fictitious business name with Mendocino County right now as Redwood Taxi Service.
Is it a, is it a corporation?
No, no. We're operating as a married couple according to the documentation.
So you are the owner?
Yes.
Mr. Gutierrez is the owner, and your business is operating under the name Redwood Taxi Service, a fictitious business name?
Yes.
And you're not operating under the name of Hay Taxi?
No. Not, well, actually, let me clarify that. In Ukiah, I do do business as Hay Taxi because of the relationship that we have with Hay Taxi, Inc. Hay Taxi has, like I said, they don't govern anything we do. They don't handle any of our marketing. They don't handle anything in operations. It's simply just a name.
Okay.
And that's the name that we badged ourselves with so that we can have a better base of clients knowing who we are.
But in Willets, your proposal is that you and your wife, as the sole owners of a business, will call that business Redwood Taxi Service?
Absolutely, yes.
The question I asked a little while ago is if we were to postpone, there's two options right on the table here, two weeks from now, which probably wouldn't deal with the exclusivity request, but would deal with the other stuff, or, or a month from now, would that impede your progress in setting this business up? And what would you prefer?
I would prefer sooner than later, of course. But I wouldn't say that it would impede me in the process. I intend to move forward as much as I can just to meet the requirements and make sure that everything is copacetic between all parties.
Okay. Because I agree with Suprema that we don't want to, you know, just throw hurdles until someone goes, "Oh, I'm just tired of it."
As a tax, a business owner, I could appreciate the sentiment. I just-
We have to do our due diligence, but we want to make sure we don't chase you out before you start.
So I appreciate that, too. And I intend to have a long-term relationship here, so this is not something I think that I'm just going to-
Great. And knowing, knowing what's also on Dusty's desk, I think giving ourselves a month is not unreasonable, as long as it's not holding up Mr. Gutierrez.
So if we can bring this back on the eight, I guess, and just bring it back, and then, and between then, I guess you could correspond with him and I-
I like the idea.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the model of bringing back a taxi service in the evening for, for folks, but I also don't want to set up such a hierarchical kind of system where it makes it really hard. As far as the exclusivity, I kind of want staff to do a little checking to what we need to do so that we're not impeding some other business that may want to come in. But if you're the only one that's here for a while, then, you know, I'm happy with that.
That's good.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item four, consent calendar. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez.
I wanted to pull item four D, the underground storage tank item. And the reason for that is there were some questions that came up about where this would be funded from, and our finance director is not available to answer those questions at this meeting. So I'd like to just hold it over to the next meeting.
Okay. So we have items A, B, C, and E on the consent calendar. Any other member of the council want to pull anything else?
I'll move to approve consent calendar, A, B, C, and E.
One second.
All right. Motion in a second. I guess we'll call vote. Kathy?
Yes. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yeah.
Stetson?
Americans laws?
Yes. All right. Item five, information reports. John, building inspection, anything you want to bring?
It's been quiet, but it's starting to pick up in the building. The issue, we've got a lot of businesses starting up. There's a lot between Dusty and myself, there's a lot of interaction there. Been working hard to put together a program to address our business and property owners, educate them as to the requirements of the Americas with Disability Act, California Building Code, accessibility regulations. I had-
This is just on the informational reports.
Yeah.
Building inspection and-
Building inspection. Thank you. I'm sorry. All right. Just wanted to make sure if there was something you wanted to highlight. Kathy, on business license, or anything that you want to bring up? Otherwise, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Could I ask?
Go ahead.
How many, how many new business license applications we've received this year so far?
Oh, gosh. She's gone. I would have to check with Dolores and get back with you on that.
Yeah, I think that would be something that would be of interest every now and then to kind of get enough data as to our new businesses coming into Willets.
Are you asking about the calendar year or the fiscal year?
Just a new informational report from time to time. It could be once a year, it could be once a quarter, just some information for the council as to how many new businesses.
And that's essentially what this is. We give it on a monthly basis. And so for the month of January, we had four new business licenses issued.
I'm kind of curious, and it's probably a technicality here, but the addresses for some of these businesses are out of town. What does that mean?
Because they are contractors doing business within the city.
And they don't necessarily live here?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha.
I have a question. Are those licenses a matter of public record? Or are they new?
The applications?
No. So they're just applications and they haven't been approved yet?
These have been approved.
Okay.
And so they are a matter of public record, but I don't believe the applications themselves are because they contain some confidential information.
But just names, like what types of businesses and what the names are.
And this report does give that information.
Okay, and that's what happened.
Yes, you should have it in the binder right there.
All right. Right to appeal, item six, persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council may have the right to review of that decision by a court. The city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. And just an explanation, we did allow somebody to kind of speak out of turn there. But I guess there are rules as far as when he has to appeal, so I just wanted to mention that.
And if I could just provide further clarification, I was approached with a request by a gentleman to address the city council to make an appeal. And I explained that that could be done under public communications. He had a different item he wanted to discuss under public communications. And so I suggested to him that he may want to address the council under right to appeal to see if there was any interest on the council's part in bringing his matter back. So it was a bit out of, you know, the standard, but that's the reason why we had some, a little bit of confusion at the last meeting. So in the future, any items that are submitted for an appeal will be agendized under this section.
Right. Item seven, commissions, agencies, and authorities. I've not seen any. We also sit as a successor agency in the planning commission, so if there was something to happen there. Item eight, city management reports and recommendations.
All right. So this is discussion and possible direction regarding amendments to the city council's procedures for conducting city council meetings. And you have in your binders Resolution Number 2009-10. It was adopted in 2009, updating the, at that point, the city's rules for conducting city council meetings. So there's been some recent questions that have come up over the last few weeks with regard to different things in the rules. And so at the staff level, we went back and took a look at them and decided to bring this discussion forward. One of the items for discussion is clarification of section 26, ad hoc committees. The, the way it's worded, it's a little bit ambiguous about what the consensus of the council is applicable to. And so we had some questions in recent weeks about the mayor's authority to establish ad hoc committees, whether or not that required council consensus to do, or whether that actually applies to who shall be seated on those committees. And so we wanted to open that up for some discussion to see if there's an interest in clarifying that language, or perhaps expanding it to include some other criteria.
I guess what started a lot of this was that whole mayor wanted ad hoc working group. Go ahead, Larry.
This came up a couple of, I don't know, a month ago, two months ago. It seemed to me that there were four people on the council that wanted something to happen, and the mayor did not want this to happen. And there was no mechanism in anything that we had for the city for the council to override or whatever that it, the legal term is, to ask the mayor to reconsider or whatever it might be. And I just think that there should be something where if, I mean, heavens forbid if the four of us would ever just think everything is the same, but I mean, to come up with a way that, that this can happen to not have the mayor just be the full benefit of, of that particular thing. Do you guys all remember that, other than?
I certainly do.
Okay. And maybe I'm wrong. I mean, maybe it doesn't bother you people, but it bothered me that, that we all sit and essentially said the very same thing, and our mayor just ignored it. And I don't think that that's good policy personally. That's just me.
I think it, I think the decisions of this body ought to be reflected by the majority of this body. And I think this is, this is definitely a rule that needs to be revised. And we were in a very awkward situation that evening when the will of the mayor was not the will of the majority. And so I would encourage you to revise this rule such that an ad hoc committee, for example, may be formed if the majority of the council members wish it to be formed.
Well, I, I think it even goes beyond just ad hoc committees. I think it, I think it addresses the nature of the composition of the city council. And this is some of the argument that was, that we had that night. For example, the City of Willets is a weak mayor city, and, and that's a significant difference. The mayor, and we, and, and, you know, I want to be very clear, this has nothing to do with individuals or, you know, the office or anything like that. I mean, if I was sitting in that seat, I would, I would be saying the same things right now. We have to, we have to explore exactly, you know, what the powers are. And, and it's very clear, especially in other parts of, of this resolution, that the mayor is a city council member with no special powers or authorities. One vote, no, no ability to veto or override any other council members is a simple thing. So that, that sort of sets the stage, I believe. And, and I'm certainly not looking to, you know, have a coup d'etat or anything like that, but, you know, I think it's important. I think what happened in, in November, it was November, wasn't it, made it very clear. I mean, we had a very, for the first time, like Larry said, we had four council members who wanted to do one thing, and one council member, who happened to be the mayor, who just blocked it. And again, I'm not trying to cause any problems, but, you know, the will of the council has to be superior, I believe.
Go ahead.
Just another example is that the mayor signs all the proclamations, and he might, he or she might not vote for them.
Yeah.
Who may have, you know, position on various things that the mayor signs them, but he or she may not have actually voted for it. So I think it is, the mayor is not, you know, it's not like-
King.
Prime minister or something.
Or a strong mayor.
It's, yeah, not like a strong mayor. And I, so I do think that it would be appropriate if there is a situation in which the majority of the council wants a particular direction to be, like a committee formation, should be possible for the council majority to make that decision, even if the mayor isn't in favor of it. There were some other things in here that I wanted to speak to, but might as well get that one first.
I kind of floated something with Jim before the meeting, that, because I, at that point, I was in the peanut gallery watching this, and it seemed like four of you were very frustrated. And, and you could tell the will of the council was to go one direction, but the will of the mayor wasn't. But I think what I floated with Jim is that we look at a model where three of you, three of us, want to go in one direction, that, that we establish an ad hoc, but that the mayor retain the, I guess, the role of at least appointing one, if not himself, to one, and that one of the majority of the three or more be, make up the other person.
That sounds-
And that way, there would be that represent, because, you know, I thought about the other one, if, for the sake, you know, now, again, if, let's say, you three over there want to do something, and me and Larry say we don't want it, well, then I appoint myself and Larry, and then we don't do anything, then I thought maybe the easy way out, I may decide, well, I want to be on there to put my two cents in, but one of you gets to be on there, then at least it moves forward, and at least there's discussion.
Yeah, but just remember, ultimately, though, whatever an ad hoc committee comes up with-
Has to come back.
Nothing happens until it's, it's approved. But, I mean, it makes it, it makes it more efficient if you have a committee that's open-minded, you know, and not comes back with, you know, a narrow thing. Then you have to start all over again and do it up here. So, you know, there's efficiency.
Oh, I get it. I guess what I want to do is not have things impeded and that it moves forward, but that the mayor can still add some direction.
Sure.
But at the same time, it doesn't get stuck in committee, so to speak, and it gets a chance to move. That was my, I guess, my proposal for that, that it would allow things to move forward, and it would reflect the majority of the council. Because, yeah, I could sign, three of you want to do something, and I just don't like it, I guess I could stomp my feet and say, "I don't want to sign that proclamation." But I think in the end, it's, what you're reflecting is the, the will of the majority. You know, obviously, I would have my opportunity to give my two cents and say I didn't like it, but the next day, when Kathy prepares the whatever for me to sign, I would sign it. So that's, I guess I wanted to offer that up as a possible solution so that we don't end up in that longer head.
Yeah, that works. It's, makes sense.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. So to summarize then, an ad hoc committee may be formed by the majority approval of the council, and the mayor shall make the appointments subject to the majority approval?
One appointment will be, will be from the majority.
Okay, all right.
The other one at the mayor's discretion. It could be the mayor goes, "You guys want to deal with this?" You know, two of you out of the three get to deal with it and bring it back.
And it might be handy to have the vice mayor- And it might be handy to have the vice mayor step in at that point, you know, as the second in command, so to speak, just to keep, you know, a formality going.
So that's one thing. Madge, you said you had some others?
Yeah, so we're talking about the whole procedures memo. One relatively small thing is, I noticed it said that we wouldn't, I can't find it right now, but, that people from the audience or the public would not be allowed to address a specific council member, or a specific staff member, even with questions, that they would direct it all to the council as a whole. And I think that's too limiting. I mean, during public comment period, people can specifically say, I didn't like it when you did such and such, and we are not allowed to prohibit that. And I think we shouldn't prohibit it in public hearing either. That if, you know, especially like if one of us makes a comment about whatever is on the agenda, and they want to single me out and say, you said such and such, you know, I don't agree with that because of it or that, that it would be okay, you know? That's a dialogue, and the public is allowed to address us as a whole group, or any individual, if that's, as long as, you know, it'd be nice if they were respectful, but, but I think it shouldn't be prohibited to-
I would, I would agree with Madge. I don't think that we should be prohibiting our ability to speak with the public.
Or for them to speak with us.
Or for them to speak with us.
Can you tell me what particular section?
Yeah, I had it at home, but I forgot to bring my little-
Section four addresses public testimony and public expression. I don't see the-
I can find it again, because I wrote it down, but I didn't have this operating at home.
I guess, oh, Madge's looking. Jim, did you see anything that stood out?
It's under Section 14. Oh. And I think Paragraph B, questioning of staff, this may be referring to-
What does that say?
Says every council member desiring to question, okay, well, this is coming from here to there, from questioning, desiring to question the city staff, after recognition by the presiding officer, shall address his or her questions to the city manager, city clerk, or the city attorney, who shall be entitled to either answer the inquiry him or herself. But that's not exactly what Madge was referring to.
That doesn't, that doesn't address public expression.
Right. But that's sort of the same thing.
You noticed it too, right? I know it's in there someplace, and I just, what is the word? Oh, okay, I think maybe it's Section 18C, possibly. That's not the one. Members of the audience.
Let's hear it, Madge, what you're doing. Larry wants to add something.
If we have public expression, that's obviously not on the agenda at all. And so it's catching everybody off guard, essentially off guard, if you're not aware of what the people, and I use it, and let me just use it as myself. If somebody is going to ask me a question, good question, bad question, whatever it is, I am not prepared to answer it and have thought it out. And I think at that particular point, what two or three people on the council should say is, well, that's a really good idea, I think that we ought to put that on the agenda. I don't think that there's anything where somebody from the audience could just be able to single you out and say things that you're not prepared to answer. And I think the way that it is right now, where you listen to them, and have no comment on it, and then just go on about your spiel, or about your agenda, is the correct way to do it. If, if I really feel the same as the other, as the person that is calling, talking to me on public communications, and Jerry also thinks that it's right, then at a certain time of the, in the meeting, we should say, you know, I think that this is something that put, ought to be put on the, on the agenda, and then we can bring it up and discuss it.
Yeah, because I differentiate that from, like today, the discussion on the taxi. Well, Dusty, you brought this before us, so we're, the public and us, or the press may ask you questions, I think, but you're prepared for that. I see that differently.
Right, so the public communications is one of the same with public expression. It's called either or with different jurisdictions. And that's the area where we can't really engage in discussion.
Oh, I agree.
But I also hear what you're saying, that, you know, at the end of the comments, you know, and sometimes people will actually say, I'd like to request that this item be put on your agenda at the next meeting, or future meeting, and so that there's some sort of response-
To that person.
To that person.
Okay.
But then we'll get into, you know, one of the items we want to discuss is placing items on the agenda.
Okay.
But what you want to avoid is a lot of back and forth dialogue-
Right.
About something that's not on the agenda, and that we're not prepared for.
Well, I, you know, I just, I mean, we could, we could spend four days on some of the meetings we have, just on that. And I've been in enough meetings to know that there's some pretty hot items that I don't have time for in three days to talk about the council.
That's when it comes to your shop?
Yeah, have to come to the store and pick a number.
But on that point, and I think this, you know, what Madge brought up, and this goes to the heart of the matter here, and quite frankly, you know, I've been on the council for over 10 years, and I've, I've been part of the council since 1998, observing or participating in it. And one of the things that's always kind of bothered me a little bit is the inability of the council and the public to have free exchange of ideas. What we see, and I'm not talking about public comment, I'm talking about, you know, just during the discussion period, you know, during an agendized item, where we can't have a discussion. What we see is someone comes up to the podium and they make a statement. And more often than not, we might get half a dozen people lined up to make comments. And person number one will make a comment and sit down. Person number two will make a comment and then sit down, three, four, five, right down the line. And at no time had, in the past at least, has there been any opportunity for a council member, or anybody else, to engage that individual, to see, you know, what do they mean, to explore what they just said. And, and I, and I know it can get big, you know, it can get bulky, because it can take time, everything, but what happens is that they stand up and they make a speech at us, and then they sit down, and the next one stands up and makes a speech again, and all the words just float out into the air, and they're never acted upon. Now, maybe a half hour later, when everybody's finished making their comments, someone might talk about stuff, you know, reply to the thing, but I have seen cases where we've had a lot of people stand up there to make public comments, and by the time it getting to the end of the line, to answer those comments, some of those people have already left. They've gone home. So it seems to me that, I think the, the number one job that we need to do here is to communicate with each other. You know, we're not, we're not a big city, we're not a big council, more often than not, we have a small audience, it's not bulky, it's not hard to deal with. And I always get a little disturbed when I see some of the other jurisdictions, and they're so formal, and, you know, right down the line. You have to have it, of course, to keep the meetings going, but I think you lose something. You lose the communication, you lose exchange of ideas. When we had the marijuana public meetings, we had two of them, and it was in this room, the room was filled with people from the public, and it was, it was open. There was no time limit. Everybody could talk, we had flowed back and forth. If someone started to get a little, you know, speaking too much, going out of line, you know, repeating themselves, we were able to stop it, and, you know, let's bring it back down again. But pretty much, it worked pretty smoothly, and we got some really good exchange of ideas. And I kind of liked the way that worked. So I'm just going to propose that in these rules here, we need, we should be mindful of trying to develop some way that we can be more open back and forth.
Madge, did you find it?
No, can't find it. I think I have it noted at home.
19A.
What?
19A.
19A?
I was looking too.
I don't know, I know I came across it before. 19A.
Yeah, Paragraph two of A. No questions shall be asked to council member or member of city staff.
There is.
Nor should any council member or members of the city staff respond to any question from the public without first obtaining permission of the presiding officer.
You know, but I think that's more of an orderly thing, order thing, because if the press wants to say, can we ask John some, may I address, I think it's, I think it was thrown in there for politeness, I don't know, do we want to avoid that? I mean, I don't see it as a silent thing.
I think we have a mechanism for people to make public comments and ask follow-up questions, and I think we just simply ask them to step up to the podium, so that they can be recognized and not only seen, but heard by the TV audience.
You know, and I think another thing this is trying to avoid is someone wanting five minutes for each of you, and instead, I think what the intention here is that someone addressing the council during a public hearing, they've got a five-minute period only, or-
Three.
Here's, about five minutes. Whatever wants, right.
We were changing it to three.
We don't know.
If you limit your remarks to five minutes, but those remarks should be to the council as a whole, as opposed to a series of-
Staff members or-
Remarks.
But that can be controlled by the mayor.
Hold on, say, Larry here.
I really don't understand this for the simple reason that I'm on duty Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and all you have to do is open my door and ask to talk to me, and I will either talk to you then, or give you a time. The thing that I see is that none of you other people are available on a regular basis for somebody to come in and talk to you, and ask you a question. And, I mean, they're asking me questions, and I don't know what the rest of you people think, and so I have to say, you have to go talk to Madge, or you have to go talk to Ron, or you have to go talk to Jerry, or whatever. And there isn't any kind of an office hours, and Holly tried to do this a number of years ago, at the-
Farmer's market.
At the thing where you get the veg, the farmer's market. And, and I don't know how it worked out, because I never really discussed that with her, but there has, if you want to talk to a council member, it's really difficult to do it unless you know where they are and at what time they are.
Actually, I think we have a mechanism now, the voicemail system.
We do. I check mine daily.
Yeah.
I check my emails, I meet with the community.
I never check mine at all.
Well, you've got a place for them to find you, so.
So, I mean, I, I don't think it's the same as talking to any of the five of us before council member to, a meeting, to say, you know, I want to explore your feelings about such and such, and sit down and have a conversation, and I think all of us are willing to do that, even if we're not quite as accessible as you are, Larry. But I, at the meeting, when you're having a public hearing, and, you know, it's just as one example, say, John is describing the floodplain issues, and says, I had a letter from so-and-so, it says that, you know, whatever it is, if I was a member of the public and wanted to get up and say, John, could you clarify, what did the, you know, what did they mean when they said it had to be 20 feet above the floodplain level, and what does that mean for my property? I think someone standing there should be able to do that. It doesn't necessarily mean John jumps up and answers right then, I think the chair can say-
But I think that's the way it's happened before, because usually, you know, somebody up there-
This says they're not allowed to ask a question to a specific member of the staff, or to a specific-
But without being recognized, I mean.
No, it said they have to direct their questions to the-
So if they come up here, what I've seen in the past is they come up, and, well, I'd like to ask John, so then John, sorry, John, we're beaten up on here today. Then John comes up and says, well, fill in, or Dusty, or whoever, I mean, I've never really seen that as a, as opposed to, you know, somebody yelling over to John from that side of the room, to whatever. I mean, I think the intent was to get them to come up here, to be recognized, so that-
I guess what I object to is the way that sentence is written, it sounds to me like I wouldn't, as a member of the public, be able to come up and say, you know, Ron, what did you mean about such and such? Or, John, what did you mean about such and such? Except by saying, Mr. Mayor, may I ask John a question? Or, I mean, it just is-
Well, I guess a lot of times I've seen it maybe may address-
It's just the way it's written, it's discouraging. It says, no questions shall be asked.
Yeah, I don't have any problem striking that sentence, I mean, yes, no questions shall be asked.
Yeah, it just seems very-
Well, you know, but, but reading that question, you know, the first thing that came into my mind was the way they do it at the Board of Supervisors. And they insist that anyone standing at the podium speaks to the chair of the board, even though they want to direct their questions to one of the other supervisors, or to staff. And I think that's a little awkward, and that might be what you're objecting to.
Yeah.
But I think the way this is written, if, if we read it, and I just read it again, basically what it's doing is the, the protocol that we do right now, if someone wants to speak, they have to be recognized by the mayor. Simple, simple thing, they're not asking, you know, they're not direct, they're not talking to the mayor, so the mayor talk to, you know, Madge, for example, they're just asking permission to speak. And it's usually not denied, so, you know.
Then Adrian, you find it.
This is standard parliamentary procedure, that every, you know, governing body has in place, but I think it's been our experience here that we aren't as rigid about it, and that's not to say that we can't be more accommodating, and that this, you know, couldn't be rewritten, but I would be hesitant to throw out standard parliamentary procedure.
I guess the rules are there as a guide, but I think, you know, I really believe that if anybody wants to come here and take their five minutes and say they're not happy of whatever, as long as they're not screaming at John, you know, here, but they're directing it up here, and they could be screaming about John.
And then you, and then you're doing it.
Then I think that provides an orderly way of doing things. Go ahead.
It's a relative order.
I personally think that it's the five minutes. If somebody has a topic that is really very vital to them, and they want to know something about, about it, they can't all, and I really realize, I don't want to get into 15 minutes or whatever, but there's got to be a mechanism where we can acknowledge that we're interested in them, and come by and see me, or I'll meet you here at the council, or whatever, instead of taking, I mean, I've been at meetings where it's lasted till 2:00 in the morning, we all have, and I don't want to do those again. So what I'm saying is, there has to be some way for the person to get satisfaction that they've got an answer, or will get an answer, and not just bog it down, and I don't know where the happy medium is, I'm just saying that I know if I had a burning question, three minutes or five minutes isn't enough.
I think that in reality, it does work that way, but it doesn't always translate in the moment. It can often feel very awkward when somebody is making a comment, or expressing a concern they have, and, you know, you say, thank you very much, they sit down, and then we move on to the next thing. But, so somehow we need to reflect in our rules what we actually do in practice, which is to follow up on this.
How about, can we set up a mechanism where if someone is planning on making a comment, that they could submit them in writing ahead of time, so we can sort of digest it ahead of time?
Yeah, I don't think you can require that.
No, not require it, but I mean, it would, it would, it would give them, the opportunity to give them the answer that they're looking for, perhaps.
It's poss, I mean, there are a lot of other jurisdictions that do that, and like Jim said, you can't require that, you can't require them to sign in, you simply ask them if they-
Yeah, but I guess if they want an answer, that's a way to get it.
And they, so the ones that the county has for the Board of Supervisors meetings, they write out their question, or whatever it is, and they put their name and, you know, usually a phone number to be contacted.
Madge.
Well, I would be very, as far as this particular point, really isn't that big of a deal, as long as, and in fact, I wanted to mention that Jerry, I like the way you have been conducting meetings, and allowing people, for example, even after the public hearing part of it is closed, if somebody goes, wait a minute, what about- hearing part of it is closed, if somebody goes, wait a minute, what about, you know, it's nice to be able to have that.
Yeah, and I guess my point is just as long as they're polite and they allow themselves to be recognized.
Right, they don't just scream.
Yeah.
But anyway, if it were to say something like, questions directed towards a specific council member or member of the city staff shall be, whatever, shall be.
Discouraged.
No, well, not discouraged, but shall be allowed, subject to the chairs or the presiding officers, you know, through the, through the presiding officer's discretion, something like that, so that we don't end up with a shouting match between somebody up here and one of us.
Well, because.
We don't want that.
And I think the way I've seen it in the past is somebody comes in and, I want to know why, blah, 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 and then usually Adrian, city manager, says, you know what, this is longer than we can spend on this today. I or a staff member will follow up with you, and that's what you hope.
Yeah.
From up here that, that occurs and that, you know.
So let us, because we're, we're not looking for any, we're crafting, we're smithing tonight on the fly. We'll work on this and bring it back, you know, possibly at the next meeting, but there are a couple of other items we wanted to address with this conversation, and several of you have referenced the five minute. That's what it actually says in our existing rules, but our practice for the last several years has been three minutes, so they need to match.
So what is, does anybody have a preference and why?
I have a preference for three minutes.
Why?
I think, well, I think if people are focused, they can get quite a bit in three minutes. If they want to provide a whole bunch of background information, they can be encouraged to do that in writing.
Okay.
And if they're an expert witness, we can always, at the discretion of the chair, can say, you know, I think, or if you're the applicant for a project and you want to explain the whole thing.
Like a guided.
Yeah, those are sort of exceptions, but I think people can, we've experienced people that come up and use their three minutes to talk about all sorts of stuff.
That's true.
And I think if people are focused, that gives them enough time.
And again, the three minutes applies both under public communications for items not on the agenda, as well as public comments for specific agenda items, and like everything else, this is a guideline, and it's really the mayor's discretion whether he wants to let somebody go a little bit further to finish their thought.
That sounds fair.
So, person's opinion, do you?
Well, I could see on the public comment for items that are not on the agenda, I like the three minutes because sometimes people can go on topics that aren't relevant, but in terms of something that's agendized, I would prefer the five minute, because if you come here for a purpose, I want to make sure that people have the opportunity to really make sure we understand what their, what their concerns are, and I've been at the podium before, and three minutes can go by very quickly, and you're, when you're trying to write it out, it, sometimes you have to leave something out, so. But like you said, the mayor does have discretion, so as long as we've got a good mayor that uses their discretion, it's all good.
Well, how about this? If we leave it at three minutes, and an agendized item, and as they're speaking, they reach the end of the three minutes, at that point, the mayor can say, well, okay, if you have a couple more minutes, you know, discretion, you can continue, but if, if they find, if he finds that the person is straying off point and, you know, repeating, then, you know, just cut it to three minutes and end it with that?
Yeah, I'm fine as long as the mayor has the discretion.
We can add that in there.
Okay.
And then also under that same section, we'd like to change spokesman under nineteen B. Spokesman, it says in one area in the spokesman leader in it.
Spokesperson.
To spokesperson.
Ladies appreciate that.
Or just a spoke.
And then we wanted to, this came up in conversation today, ask what the feeling is about possibly having an adjournment time rule. So Larry mentioned being here until 2:00 in the morning at times. That's, that's not the norm, but sometimes we do have rather late council meetings, and so does the council wish to entertain an adjournment time rule like the Board of Supervisors have? They meet at 9:00 in the morning. They have a 5:30 rule.
They also have exceptions to the rule, right? They can, council, or Board of Supervisors, the mayor can move to waive that, make the rule, extend it for another 30 minutes or something, so.
So what are you thinking, like, 10, 11?
I was thinking 30.
6:45?
Well, I guess the only thing I, I see with that is then are we prepared, for example, I remember in Remco, the first Remco hearings, you know, 20 years ago, or whatever it was, the place was packed, and it went into the wee hours. Do you cut it off, schedule a separate hearing for something like that, and then agree to meet the next day? I mean, in practicality, how will that work with staff? That's the concern I have, because, okay, I'm retired now, so I'll come back tomorrow, assuming I don't have a vacation plan or something, but staff may have meetings or whatever, and for the public, especially if somebody wants an answer, you know, I've been to plenty of them where it doesn't feel like anything got resolved, just because it got to the wee hours and a lot of the players just left, and people said, I got tired and left.
Well, like Jim said, you could establish, if you wanted to look at this, you could also establish what those exceptions would be, and I would imagine it would require an action of the council to enforce that or, you know, introduce that exception for a particular meeting. That was just something I wanted to throw out.
I agree. For me, 11 o'clock is kind of my, my cap. I feel like at that point, I, my body needs rest, my blood sugar's low, and.
Your mind is.
I'm not, I'm not at my best.
Yeah.
And I, the public deserves for us to be at our best, and for us really to be listening. I'm not sure that I'm really going to be listening after 11:00 PM at night.
Especially if we have a closed session afterwards.
Would that include a closed session time?
That's hard to do, I think.
Yeah, I would suggest if you're going to do, if you're going to make a time limit, that it be for the regular agenda, and then maybe a stop at 10:00 or 10:30. You know, 10:30 is a four-hour meeting. That's quite a long meeting, but you build in some, some mechanism to extend it, and maybe it's a, if one-fifth of you agree, you extend it another 30 minutes or something.
When we had this issue on the school board, and we knew that we were going to have a top, a hot topic, we would make sure that we allotted the time, and maybe we would start our meeting early, or we would lighten the agenda of other items so that we could focus a chunk of time on whatever that hot topic is. I think there's other ways that we can address it so that the public feels like we have the opportunity to speak, and, you know, we're not going on and on. There's things on the agenda that we could, we could do without.
Well, I'm in a position where I'll defer to my colleagues here. I, I could go till 2:00, but that was my last job, so. But at the same time, I, I get it that if you guys wanted to do that, as long as maybe there's a sample language you could bring back.
You know, this, this past year or two, our meetings have been not brief, or not, not very long. 10 years ago, we often met till midnight, but this last year, they've been pretty efficient.
We haven't had any lawsuits.
The blind pass is built. We don't have to meet.
So do we, I guess, are you insinuating that at this moment, we don't have a problem? Should we? I mean, it sounds like you brought it up, Adrian.
Well, yeah, in talking with staff, and the full disclosure there, you know, we're here at the beginning of the day, and so this is, you know, tacked on to our already full day, but that's, that's not, that's not what is compelling me to look at this. Yes, I've heard comments, you know, over the past, and Jim's right, our meetings this last year have been more manageable in terms of time, you know, time lengths, but that could change, and if we're looking at these rules as a whole, I just think this is something that you may wish to consider.
I'd like to put it in there.
Madge.
I, I prefer to make sure that we deal with the items that are on the agenda that same evening rather than, you know, continuing to another time, because I think that's hard for the public and hard for us as well. And I don't personally have a problem staying up until midnight, still functional, but I can understand that that's not true for everybody. So I, I think as long as we have a way to extend the time, if it looks like we're at 10:15 and we've said 10:30 is the limit, we say, you know, how many more people still want to speak, because if there's a lot of you, we might have to continue this two weeks from now, or something like that, so that we, and then we could extend the time if it's only going to be 15 minutes or 20 minutes more. I've seen that done in other places where it also encourages the people that are here, when there's 20, 30 people wanting to speak on something, to start getting more succinct, if you say, you know, we're, we're in danger of not being able to complete this item if everybody keeps wanting to go on. Anyway, I'd like to, I'm, I'm willing to set a time limit as long as we have the flexibility to extend.
Yeah, I'm for the limit. I really don't function really well after 11 o'clock, personally. I, I get up at 5:30 in the morning, and it's, it makes a long day, and anyhow, I just, I think there's a time limit that should happen, and there's some hot button items that are out there. They're just not surfaced yet, but they're out there.
That's true.
I guess the consensus is, can you bring us back some, some model that takes into account that we may want to extend?
Have we, have we actually figured out what we want on the approach to how to put something on the agenda?
I think that's.
That, that's the next item.
Oh, okay, because that's, that's the other.
Same agenda item, next, next bullet point.
Okay.
And actually, before we go to that, we were having some discussion about Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which is in your binders, and it's something that we've had. It's part of our, you know, procedures for many years, but it's never been formally adopted, and other jurisdictions do formally adopt it and incorporate it into their rules, the procedure.
Right, because it's a much more efficient and modern version, say, of Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order is this archaic, hard-to-read book that really doesn't lend itself well to public meetings of this type, and this Rosenberg's Rules is something that the League of California Cities has recommended and provides copies to, and many, many cities in California have adopted it as rules. I looked today at the City of Santa Rosa, and they have rules of procedure just like we do, and rule number one, or section number one, is the city council hereby adopts Rosenberg's Rules of Order, and it's attached as, as an appendix. Then it says throughout the rules that if, in, in case of any conflict between Rosenberg's rules and the city's rules, the city's rules will apply, but it's a good way of, it's policy. It's a good way of interpreting our own rules, and one thing that Rosenberg's rules does, for example, is express that the public's right to participate, and the decisions of the city council should be reflected by the majority of the members. And in, anyway, it is just about two or three pages. It's a very succinct recommendations about how to conduct a public meeting, and what I thought, what I was going to recommend is that we take a look at the City of Santa Rosa's ordinance, we can bring that back the next time, and maybe some other jurisdictions, and, and consider adopting.
Formally adopting.
Formally adopting Rosenberg's. We've had, we've had it in your packets for five years or longer, but never, never was any action taken to it.
Do we have them here at our places?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I don't have any objections to them.
Are they in here?
You don't have any?
No, there's a lot of stuff in there.
It's not very long.
Jerry and I received a copy when, just recently.
So we'll work on, on those things and bring them back, and so the last bulleted item for discussion is possibly adding a new section to our rules that define the authority for placing items on the council's agenda. And in, in my agenda summary, I had recommended that there be a consensus, which would be three council members, that would basically greenlight some, an item being placed on the agenda. Since this was published and in discussions with a couple of council members, I realized that's going to be problematic, because that forces it to come to a council meeting just to make the request, and then it would have to come back in a subsequent meeting to, to be discussed and acted upon. So I want to alter my recommendation that it be two council members that request an item be placed on the agenda. That way it can come directly to me without further delay of having to seek that permission from the full council.
So how would that work in practice?
So, say you, something comes to your attention, and it could be, you know, from the community, or something you've read, maybe, you know, a hot topic, and you want to place it on the council's agenda for discussion and perhaps action, you would have to get another council member that felt the same way about bringing it forward to the council.
All right, so conceivable that that could maybe, would that be a Brown Act violation? If the first person you, if first council member I would speak to didn't want to go there, then I have to talk to another one. Are we getting?
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to talk to a third one.
No, there's no Brown Act violation, though, for city staff to independently discuss an issue with each of you.
So the way it would work is if one of us wanted to put something on the agenda, we would contact you, and then you would contact other couns, pull the other council, at least one other?
I would send out, I would likely send out an email where I would blind copy each of you so that there's not going to be any interaction between you, to ask if there is any interest in forwarding this item to the agenda.
Okay, but that sounds simple, yeah.
Yeah, I was worried about the same thing, you know, if I, if I wanted to place something on the agenda and I asked Jerry, and he said, no, I don't really want to do it, then I can't talk to anybody else, but I could always ask you, and if you want, if you agree with the idea, you don't have to even do that. If I, well, like the Neil Act letter that we had on our consent calendar, I sent it to you and you put it on the consent calendar.
Right, and, and so the difference with that is, that came from the League of California Cities, and we are a member of the League of California Cities, and they send us alerts almost daily on hot topics, things that are pressing in nature, need to, you know, they need either support on or opposition or some sort of, you know, communication from the member cities, and so I see that differently, and that's more of a routine matter. It won't always be placed on the agenda, or on the consent calendar, rather.
No, I just, I was, that was an efficient process, because it was obvious that that was easy to put on the agenda.
Yeah, and I think we chatted about that earlier, because we were kind of, me and Adrian about this, because I said, it's the league, so I kind of see it that, let's say I'm on vacation and you got some league alert that maybe Adrian wasn't aware of, and you say, hey, did you get this? You know, they're going to do X.
But let's say if it was something more, not a league recommendation, but, I don't know, like a heritage tree ordinance, and I found one from Santa Rosa or from someplace and said, I think we should consider this, and without going to my fellow council members, which I'm not supposed to do, I could send that to you with just enough information for you to send it to the others and say, is there someone else who?
Yes.
Likes to see this agendized?
Yes.
And as long as there's two of us say yes, then it could be the agenda. And at the agenda meeting, you can always vote it down. I mean, it doesn't, that's why, it doesn't make sense to have three people have to approve it being on the agenda.
Yeah, that made sense.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. That sounds like a good plan.
This brings up something that has, that Adrian and I have talked about several times. I think that, I don't know, how am I going to put this very nicely? If I have something that is really pertinent to me, I'm not one to wait for a week or two weeks before I can talk about it. And my thing about it is, what, if I want some information, and I'll just put it the way I do it, if I want some information from Dusty, and I, I, right now, I cannot go to Dusty and say, I need some information on this, because this is something that I think that the community is talking about or whatever. Dusty has to go to. that the community is talking about," or whatever, Dusty has to go to Adrian and get the okay in order to give me the information. And at that particular time, I mean, it can be literally a long time. And I don't know how to do, how to make it better, because I understand the point from Adrian's point of view also. But from my point of view, and I know it's going to take, and I'll use Dusty, it's okay if I use you, Dusty, for this. It's, and I know that Dusty is up to his gum stump with all the things that he needs to do. And to have four or five other council members come to him and say, "Would you get this for me?" is just probably mind-boggling. But there has to be a center area in there where we can do something without overloading Adrian and having to go this, and this, and this, and this. I mean, this is, I mean, if I was in Adrian's spot, there is absolutely no way in the world that I could, that you can do that. I mean, you can, maybe, but the rest of us can't do that, okay? So there has to be something where I can go to Dusty and say, "You know, I need this information, I don't have to have it tomorrow, but would you do it?" What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is, I'm not going to tell Dusty that he's got to go out and dig a ditch or anything. All I want him to do is to go into his computer, or wherever he has its information, run it out, give it a copy to me, and I'm on about my business. I mean, I don't think that that's too much to ask, and I know Adrian, Adrian and I have had this discussion a lot, so she understands.
Well, can I add something? Because as a former staff person, if it's just one question, a lot of times, it's a no-brainer, it's not an easy thing, it's when you get to lose. Now, I'll tell you, and I know you're not an email guy, but a lot of times, I've sent out emails to folks and CC'd Adrian and said, "Hey, I got this request," whether it's from the public or whatever, "but I've also got a lot of other stuff on my plate." Basically, I mean, I guess I, my mind would be, if I sent Dusty an email, CC'd you and said, "Hey, Adrian, I'm sending this to Dusty, because I want this," but kind of taking out the middleman, because a lot of times, you come down, I know how you operate, you come down and you talk to Adrian and say, "I want this information," and you're frustrated, because it's like playing the game telephone, you really want to just talk to Dusty. But if you did an email, and I'll just defer to Adrian.
Okay. So our municipal code actually lays out the procedure for the...
Chain of command.
Chain of command, thank you. So as the city manager, I'm your only employee, and so any direction you have is supposed to go through me, and then I in turn give directions to staff. Now, like we were talking about the rules of procedure, that have a formality to them that may differ from what our actual practice is, that is less formal, I believe that we are less formal in practice with our communication. And my only thing is, I want to be kept in the loop. It's fine to go to any staff member and ask them, you know, questions or for some information, because that's not unlike any member of the public coming in and wanting some information on something. But it's when you start directing staff members, which is not the job or the role of the city council or city council members, it's my role to do that, so that's why that communication in both directions needs to flow through me. That does not mean that you can't have direct communication with them. It's really a matter of being kept in the loop, so that I do know what's going on. And staff feels like I have a good grasp on their workload, they feel like they can come to me and say, you know, "I got this request, it's turning out to be more labor-intensive than what it seemed on the surface, and so I need your guidance on this." So it's about prioritizing and, you know, good communication and honoring the chain of command.
Yeah, I understand, you've explained this to me 50 times, but it doesn't make sense to me. I'll just, we'll leave it at that and let it go at that. I understand what has to happen.
Well, I just, just to build on that, I mean, what I've been doing, I think it's worked okay, is I like the emails, too, because playing phone tag or trying to chase somebody down on the streets of the city just don't work. So I will send an email to the staff member and to Adrian. And most of the time, I've received a reply from the staff member and not from Adrian, which is fine, you know, but I know that you've seen it, and I suspect that there was a conversation between you and the staff member, so everybody's on the same page. And that's an eternal thing, and that works for me. And I'm sure if you had an issue with that, you would have let me know. So I find it that way. The nice thing about emails is that they can answer whenever they're able to, and I'm never in a hurry. Or if I am, you know, I may indicate that.
Yeah, and I see, and I guess I look at that in a different light than me coming in and saying, "Dusty, I want data for the last 30 years, and I need it by this afternoon." Or I come to John's office and say, "John, I want to show you these issues, and jump in my car with me and let's go look at them," and taking up half your day, because I know that sort of stuff has happened in the past. I've heard, I've heard of it, you know? That's different versus an email that says, "Hey, I need the following information, Adrian, just so you're aware," because I may not be aware that Adrian's assigned Dusty to do X, Y, Z, or that Supreme had already hit you up for information, and he's working on a, or he's working on a public records request, which, you know, we've had a couple of times lately. And that may be the direction you'd be giving him, is, "Yeah, I know Ron wants that information, I'll get with him and tell him he ain't getting it today, you've got to finish this X, Y, Z project."
There is a ton of workload that doesn't rise to the council level, and so I appreciate that there's an awareness that, you know, we have a, we have a pretty lean staff, and everybody has, have their own overflowing plates. And so that's another reason why there's a need to make sure that I'm aware of what's going on. I don't micromanage staff, I think, you know, they'd be the first to tell you that I don't. It's more, you know, pushing them out the airplane and saying, "Parachute opens and works well." But we do have good communication, and like you said, Ron, I do monitor my emails, and, you know, if I don't need to respond, or if I've talked with them and they have, we have a plan for how it's going to be responded to, then, you know, I'll have it.
And I sense that that's always the case. And there's another aspect of that as well. I mean, I've done this with our finance director. And I know that very often, we come to the meetings, and one of the staff members makes a report, and one of us may ask them a question that they really don't have the answer to at that moment. So I found that as I go through the agenda, and if I have a question that could be a little involved, I will shoot off an email to the staff member and say, you know, "This is what I'm concerned with," so they can come to the meeting prepared.
Which is much appreciated, and it doesn't have to be an email, it can be a phone call, it can be a visit. I try to, you know, check in with each of you a day or two before each council meeting. So, you know, I realize email doesn't work for you, and so we just need to find a way that you feel like you're getting what you need.
I understand, I understand. I just have to keep bringing it up, because I think it's wrong, but we'll go on from there. Thank you.
Anything else on this?
No.
All right, you got some direction, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. My glasses back on. All right. Any verbal reports?
Oh, yes. Let me find the right notepad. So we had some power issues earlier in the week, and was it Tuesday, Monday?
Yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tuesday. Or maybe it's Monday.
Monday.
Monday, okay.
No, Tuesday, Tuesday morning. It was yesterday, it felt like two days, it was one day.
We had a transformer that blew, well, PG&E did, just behind Brookside Schools, that wiped out quite a few homes and schools. So Willets Unified was closed that day, and then we had a second, I think it was another transformer that blew. We actually heard it in the office that afternoon. So fortunately, all of that got restored. I have to say that PG&E has been really great to work with, very responsive. I've heard that from our water and wastewater plants as well. With these power outages, we've been impacted at our plants. And so on Monday, one of our pump stations, the one on Maple Street, was down to four feet of water. And so our crew took a generator out there to keep that going, so that it never drained empty. When it drains empty, then we have to send out the boil notices to, you know, our water customers. So fortunately, that did not happen. Our crews did a terrific job just monitoring the situation and responding accordingly. Likewise, public works crews, very busy, especially with the high winds, with some downed trees, and trying to be as proactive as possible by, you know, evaluating trees throughout town before and after these storm events, and making sure that the crews, the trucks are equipped with the chainsaws, and they're powered and ready to go. So we do have another significant storm rolling in, I think, tonight, that is supposed to be, bring some more winds, so we just, you know, want to remind everybody to be very aware of your trees on your property, and, you know, about a month ago, if that, there was a woman in Ukiah that was tragically killed when a tree fell in her home. So just really want to underscore the importance of making sure that your trees are in good health, that you have, you know, an arborist come out, and evaluate your trees every few years. And that's what we did with our trees at City Park and over at Rec Grove, which is what led to the decision to take down some of those trees, because they were either diseased or dead. And we certainly don't want to have those kinds of tragic events in the community. Over the last couple of days, we've been conducting interviews for our wastewater treatment plant operator to fill a vacancy over at the plant, and I'm told by staff that the applicants have just been really impressive. So we think we'll be making a decision in the next few days on that position. And we have other interviews scheduled, both this week and next week, for various positions at the police department. We are still in the process of scheduling an ADA educational forum for our local businesses. We're working with the chamber on that. I'm meeting with one of our business folks and the chamber president next Wednesday over one proposal we received, and then John Sherman has also been reaching out to some of the experts that he knows. And so we are very close to pinning that down. And then lastly, we're just continuing our efforts with the grandstands at, the rodeo grounds that were damaged in December from a tree falling because of a storm and wind damage. And, you know, that's going to be a big project. So we're just, we're continuing to work with REMEF and the people that they brought in, engineer and insurance adjuster on that, to, you know, get that taken care of, obviously in time for rodeo day, or frontier days.
All right. Is that, is this item nine, city clerk, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Our finance person isn't here today, human resources. All right, legal?
No, no report.
All right. Community development, community development. Do you have anything, Dusty?
All right, so just to be clear, no trap door in case staff recommends something you don't like, or Damian talks longer than three minutes. That's good. For what it's worth, my interactions directly with council have been fine, nothing inappropriate, no complaints.
You have your fingers crossed.
I don't see which council. Let's see here, lots been happening. We met a few weeks ago with the Caltrans bigwigs that came up from Eureka, amongst other places, to talk about the relinquishment project. There's been ongoing discussions about what Caltrans' role was with, as far as paying and building things, and what the city's role was with paying for some of the extra improvements we identified in our Main Street planning effort. And it was a positive conversation. It appears that they're interested in paying for some improvements that they weren't showing interested in the past meetings, including things like irrigation lines under both sidewalks, electrical lines, and then also possibly paying for broadband conduit. One of the ideas that staff had was, since we're going ahead and ripping up the roads, well, why don't we go ahead and throw some broadband conduit down? It's not super expensive. Often, the big cost is actually ripping the road up itself. So since that meeting, there's been some ongoing conversations between some of the Caltrans design teams and staff as to some of the specifications of what a broadband conduit system might, might look like. Trish Steele with the Broadband Alliance has been, continues to be a tremendous resource for the city. She's been to pair us up with some of the experts that have some, some great knowledge on designing broadband systems, and have been able to answer some of the questions that both staff and Caltrans had. So we're moving forward with that idea and continue to explore the idea of them helping out with paying for some additional costs with the relinquishment project. Through a actual mutual friend that, with a local business owner and the deputy director of Caltrans, we were actually able to hold a meeting in Willets with business leaders last week to discuss signage, our favorite topic. And again, encouraging words, the deputy director of Caltrans for District One was there, he brought along some of his key staff, and they stated that they're going to look into trying to establish some signage that in previous conversations, we were told we weren't going to get, such as the logo signs on the North Interchange. Some other key signage that we talked about was coming down the grade, past the Calfire Station, maybe having another sign that says, "Willets X miles ahead," or something. Again, just keying in that, hey, our community's coming up, and get ready to get off the exit and spend a bunch of money. So that was a positive conversation. We provided them, them being Caltrans, with the resolution we passed last meeting for the, for the additional downtown signage signs. We've requested to meet with their staff out in the field to figure out where those should be located, how many, the size, et cetera. Again, we're certainly exploring ways to keep the cost at a minimum. The cannabis ad hoc committee has been meeting. I think everyone on that committee feels like we're making good progress. We have a goal of bringing a formal report back to the full council at our next meeting on the 22nd for discussion. Let's see, I met with the LAPCO director earlier this week, and this is a process that they initiate, where they periodically review jurisdictions, in this case, our jurisdiction's our sphere of influence, this is our ultimate planning boundary. Right now, by default, our sphere of influence is our city limits. If we were ever wanting to annex additional lands outside of this current city limits, that would need to be eligible, it'd have to be within our sphere of influence. You essentially draw the sphere of influence first, and that makes that land eligible for annexation at a later date. So we'll probably have a formal report for you on that, as we get more information, or at least a recommendation from LAPCO. We met with Assemblyman Jim Wood. We're looking to take advantage of the unique situation with Willets, in that we just got bypassed, and we, one of the members of the meeting coined the term "economic mitigation." So we're looking for some help at the state level, maybe a one-time addition to the, to their budget to get some money for Willets. A lot of this is just words at this point, but it's encouraging nonetheless.
On that point, getting help from the feds or from the government, last week, week before, when Jim Wood and Jared Huffman had their thing down in Ukiah, I spoke to Congressman Huffman afterwards, and he asked me how Willets was doing, he asked me, you know, how the bypass is affecting us, and I told him that it's too early to tell, we're getting mixed reviews. But he said to me, he said, "If I can ever do anything for you, for the city, let me know." He'd like grants or whatever." So I wrote that down.
I had it signed.
Yeah, I actually did it in my palm of my hand, but, you know, this is something that, in regard to what you had just said about getting some grants and... some grants and things like that, that's a possibility. We could reach out to him.
Yeah, and they've been good about providing letters of support for some other grants that we've gone after and everything. But I'm glad that he shared that with you, and I believe that to be true. That's what I had.
Thank you. John, you got something?
Yeah, sorry about my earlier turn. I actually have a problem hearing Mayor Gonzalez from the back row, so I think I'm probably going to move my traditional seat up a few rows.
Oh, okay. I'll try and speak up a little louder then.
Well, I did. When you get to be my age, certain things stop working as well as they used to, so I'll be forward. Been very busy. The storms have led to a lot of attention being paid to our creeks and possible flood resolutions to localized flooding, things like that. And I want to thank our engineering department. Suzanne specifically put a lot of effort into running a lot of hydraulic calculations that I'm, I'm not an engineer, I can't do that stuff. But they really gave me a lot more information to use in my decision-making and what I pursue. Also, I've been talking with the team that Adrian mentioned at the rodeo grounds. The damage to the grandstands really brought to light that things are not the way they're supposed to be over there. And we're going to have to put some effort into getting it straightened out. And it's going to be an effort to get it done in time for Frontier Days, but we're prepared to do. And I want to thank Bill Wilson as well. He's really, he's sort of brought me into this, and then he's been my go-to guy for information and contacts and things like that. Doing pretty well, as Adrian mentioned before. The ADA issue has been taking a lot of time, but I'm really learning a lot. And I have an appointment tomorrow morning with a certified access specialist that's going to talk to me about possibly making a presentation to our business community and property owners. It's been pretty busy, that and the flooding, and I've had lots to do.
Question. Clarify the relationship that the city has with the rodeo grounds. I understand that several years ago, we signed the rodeo grounds over to the Frontier Days?
I think that's a question that should be directed to Adrian. I don't know.
So who owns it? Who owns the?
City owns it.
The city still owns it?
They lease the grounds from us.
Okay, and we're still responsible for maintenance?
No.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
They tend to the maintenance. We carry insurance on all of our properties. And so the damage to the grandstands and the repair for those, that's coming out of our insurance policy.
Okay, okay. So that's why we were interested in that, because of the liability?
Right.
Gotcha.
Then the code requirements.
The which?
The code requirements.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
ADA and California Building Code requirements for accessibility have really played a big role in directing what we're going to do with that.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to clarify who's responsi-- I mean, you know, we license buildings, you know, private businesses to run their business, and they're responsible to do the maintenance. But because of our ownership stake in the grounds, that's where we come in and have to do those repairs.
Well, there's a difference between maintenance and repairs.
Right. Well, yeah, okay.
And I was brought into the situation initially just to make a call on what the code requires on us there. And it got deeper and deeper as I looked, so. The last thing is, I believe, last night, Willets Unified School District Board approved our lease agreement for the gymnasium and the swimming pool. And I had a good discussion this morning with Mark Westerberg, and I'm doing some really minor modifications to the tennis court agreement, and we'll be getting that to him in the next day or two.
There's some behind the scene, I mean, there's some underlying benefits, I mean, about repairing tennis courts and maintaining the pool or something that I've heard. Can you go into that at this point?
Essentially, the school district is leasing the gymnasium and the swimming pool from us for 10 years at $1 a year. And they're responsible for the maintenance on both of those facilities.
Year-round?
Year-round.
On the tennis courts?
Pardon me?
On the tennis courts?
The tennis court, different story. We're going to maintain control of the tennis courts. We are going to be responsible for the maintenance on the tennis courts. The school district is helping us as a partner to make the repairs needed to put it back in service.
Okay. That's not exactly what I heard, but that's good. This is good information.
I'm just doing the final edit on the agreement right now. That's basically what we want to do. The school district independently is going to rebuild the lighting system, and that's really good for all of us because it's a really old-fashioned system, and it eats a lot of energy.
And the surface of the plane?
We're out for proposals right now for different contractors.
I know a few residents are going to stop calling me now.
Well, let's get the work done first.
Yeah, okay.
So as John mentioned, that's, we've been negotiating back and forth for, I would say, maybe three months at this point, just to fine-tune what needs to be done, how the responsibilities are going to be assigned, and not only for the repairs to bring everything up to a good standard, but then on a going-forward basis, where do the responsibilities lie? And so it's really been, you know, the devil in the details and making sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
That sounds great.
So we are planning, I think we're going to be ready to finally bring this back to the council at the next meeting.
Good, thank you.
And the best part is the community gets improved facilities. So it's a win-win.
Yes.
Yeah, about that.
We're still, we're still looking at the operation of the summer swim program. Our contract identifies us as the operators of the summer swim program, even though the school district will continue to maintain the facility and everything through that period of time. Right now, there's discussions going with the kids club and about possibly them taking over the summer swim program. They have some young people that are very qualified, and they seem to be interested in doing it. And that might be a way for us to get the community more involved in the summer swim program.
Huh, and maybe balance the pressure a little bit.
That certainly might help.
Yeah. Nice.
All right, thanks. Thanks, John. All right, do you have anything more for Public Works and Engineer?
No.
Can I make a comment about the Water Department? Some good news, I think. The individual will remain anonymous, but one of, a vocal critic in the past of the Water Department approached me last week and told me how pleased they are with the Water Department, with the operation, with how things are going, and everything is just perfect. And I was happy to hear that.
We are too.
Yeah.
All right. Item 10, City Council and Committee Reports. League of Cities, I believe there's a meeting coming up.
No, it was Monday, and I had my stuff go, and she has a report.
Oh, okay, League of Cities. Okay. Do you have a report?
You're referring to the, okay. Just making sure we're all on the same page.
No, I'm talking about League of Cities.
Oh.
I went for MCOC.
It says here it says MCOC.
No.
Is it, are we on 10?
I think you're looking at minutes from a previous meeting.
Yeah.
I hate this thing.
League of Cities.
No wonder they're new so long for you.
Yeah. I'm League of Cities. Yeah, well, we also had a League of Cities training on Prop 64 that Madge and I attended, and Suprina was there. We didn't interact, we were there training, so that was good.
That was great.
We got a lot of good information there. And then it looks like the next meeting is March 3rd in Cloverdale. I've got RSVP still. MCOC.
MCOC, okay. So I thought it was very interesting. I was able to go in Larry's place, and Larry was nominated by myself as the vice chair.
Oh, I love that.
So congratulations to Mr. Stransky. And at the meeting, there were two big items that were discussed, two bills that the MCOC was putting forward that they want to support for. They're not ready to bring them back to the cities, but it's something that will be coming this way. And the host is that, I believe, the total amount of the bill will be $40 million, and then it'll get distributed throughout California.
Is this a federal bill or a state bill?
A state. We would see a large chunk of that money should that pass, but the city would have to support that as well.
And we, meaning MCOC, not Willets.
MCOC gave their support to it, and now each incorporated city within the county will be asked to show their support. But that'll be coming to the city at a later date. And other than that, there was just discussion about appointments, sort of the formalities of a new year.
Okay, and now Economic Development and Finance incorporation?
EDFC, there's a special meeting tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:00 in Ukiah. The topic of discussion is cannabis and whether the EDFC will decide to start financing cannabis-related businesses.
Isn't it also strategic planning as well?
There is strategic planning.
Right, so that's more broad as well?
Yes, but when I met with, when I met with the director of the program.
John Curry.
He said it was, yes. He said it was mostly focused on, that was the primary purpose of this special meeting.
Okay.
Wow.
Yes, interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question to attend also as the alternate, just to stay in the loop on that.
All right, ENSWA.
Well, I reported at our last meeting two weeks ago that unfortunately, the new executive director of ENSWA has submitted her resignation. And she's not in a time crunch to leave, but it means we're having to start looking at what the replacement options are. And that's also starting to affect the county's vegetarian contribution to ENSWA. So we have a special meeting just Monday of this week, mostly to discuss that and also a couple of minor budget changes that were made, but that was relatively small. And then we're probably going to have another special meeting relatively soon because there's a lot of questions about the range of duties and the salary that we would be offering for a new executive director coming in.
Do you have candidates in line?
That's part of the discussion is, you know, are there existing candidates, or is it wide open?
Yeah, well, you.
Right now, that's not really clear.
Okay, it's important to know that there was this intense discussion.
I'm aware of that.
Okay. Good.
Dull discussion, so.
No, of course.
MTA?
MTA's not met since our last meeting.
Right, and I attended the LAFCO meeting on Monday, apparently there every, the first Monday of the month, so. And I came on as the newest city member. There was an issue with the city select committee not appointing a, an alternate. The other city member is Kevin Dobell from Ukiah. He's a city council member down there. He was an alternate for the cities. So at the next city select county meeting, there'll be an appointment there, and that also, apparently, the issue with NCRRA will come up then, so. And the selection of officers, the chair is Jerry Ward again. And I didn't bring my notes, so, but they did kind of combine the treasurer position in with Jerry Ward. Apparently, he's quite the money guy. The interchange is there.
Jerry Ward is chair of the LAFCO?
Yes. And they talked about the fact the director was, basically at the end of that meeting, was going to be coming up to talk to Dusty about that, and they gave some updates. Apparently, there was an issue with Anderson Valley Ambulance District and the Fire Department merging, and that's been going on for a while. So apparently, since I was brand-new to that group, apparently there's been some things lagging in LAFCO when they're trying to address those. So that was the gist of that meeting. And Finance Committee hasn't met, so do we have a?
No, but Kathy did distribute an updated calendar reflecting some of our standing committee meeting dates. Finance Committee, though, is yet, those dates are to be determined, but the goal is to have quarterly meetings, and I believe Suzie wants those to follow. I forget what the time interval was, but after we get the quarterly sales tax reports. And then, let's see, some of the other committees like MCOC, LAFCO, ENSWA, and EDFC are reflected on this calendar as well.
Okay. And then Reby Ed?
Has not met.
Okay.
Is there a date?
All right.
Yeah, I think we've got some tentative dates.
Tentative dates, and that is not a, I don't mean.
Okay. Caltrans, Dusty reported on that, and we haven't really had a meeting there, so. Caltrans Ad Hoc Cannabis Meeting, we are meeting. GPA feasibility, steady wastewater, we haven't had that. And Council Member Reports and Recommendations, does anybody have anything? All right, no enactment of ordinances, so any good and welfare?
I would like to thank the member, the new member, for taking time out of her busy schedule to cover for me for MCOC. Thank you very much.
No problem, it was my pleasure. I often get asked as a new council member how busy I am, and in the beginning, it was kind of rolling in, and now that things are kind of in full swing and I'm really getting the feel of the time commitment. I shared recently with somebody that I'm spending about 15 to 20 hours a week strictly related to council duties, and then at this time of year, I'm spending about 10 to 12 hours a week of other type of community volunteer efforts, and then, of course, a day job. It is, Dusty gives some time.
Madge, you?
I'll just repeat to that. I announced that this Saturday, February 11th, is the Trio of Trios Concert, and is a fundraiser for the Food Bank, which is a very good cause. And I'm in one of the groups, and it should be very nice music, and it's at the Methodist Church, starting at 7:00 on Saturday night.
And the Rotary Crab Dinner is?
February 17th.
February 17th, so.
If anybody wants tickets, you have three Rotarians up here that you can get tickets from, or any other Rotarian in town.
And that is to raise money for the High School Scholarship Program, so. And thank you to the OR Press folks for giving us lots of coverage. And then I guess we, some of us attended the prayer breakfast the other day, and it was really nice listening to Dr. Levy, kind of, I guess some people said they were a little grossed out talking about heart surgery, but.
Brain surgery.
Sorry, brain surgery, but he, it was very interesting to listen to his trials and tribulations and talk about stress management.